Good evening. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Cholo City Council the order by roll call. See that all council members are present tonight. Would also like to welcome those of you who are with us tonight in the chamber, as well as those who may be watching this evening on City 56. This evening, we have some special guests with us. We have the Cholo High School student body, and they're going to be shadowing some of the council members tonight. They'll be taking over. I'm just going to have each one of them introduce themselves and who they're representing this evening. Start here with our mayor.
I'm Kirsten Adams, and I'm representing the mayor. Yeah, okay.
Okay, I'm McKenna Schmidt, and I am representing the vice mayor.
I'm Connor Anderson. I'm representing council member Leach.
I'm Danielle Quintana, and I'm serving councilwoman Connie Kokavas.
I'm Jose Fregozzo. I'm representing councilman Mike Alsop.
I'm Akira Kass, and I'm representing councilman Jean Kelly.
I'm Jackson Allen, and I'm representing council member Rennie Crittenden.
Thank you. Good-looking bunch of youth that we have with us this evening. Would like to begin this evening with an invocation. We've asked Jackson Allen if he would give the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Alina Hackery. Those who would like to join with us in the pledge and invocation, please stand.
Our dear, kind, gracious heavenly Father, we're very grateful for this opportunity to gather here as a city. Please bless us. We could go throughout this meeting, and we'll resolve everything, and we could come together as a city and accomplish our goals. And we're very grateful for the opportunity to serve under Thee. We love Thee, United Citizens, in the name of Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Jackson and Alina. Appreciate that. Our first item tonight is Call to the Public. Citizens who would like to speak on a matter that may not be on the agenda may do so at this time. Keep your... You are limited to three minutes, and just direct your message to council as whole. We have three people so far. If anyone else, there's a little blue slip that they can fill out. But we have Aaron Leach. If you've come up, just state your address, please, for the record.
Hi, my name's Aaron Leach. My address is 1220 North 42nd Drive on Cholo, Arizona. I'm here to let you guys know I am a wildland firefighter, but I put on a Hero's Christmas Tribute. It's a light show dedicated to our heroes, police, fire, and military. It's probably about 20,000 lights, and it's all... They all dance to tribute videos to honor those heroes who made the ultimate sacrifice and those who serve our community every day. It's free admission. Got it on. Pretty much, just give me a call. I got some cards for you guys to get the address and number, and it's anywhere... It's just an idea of giving you guys a... Kind of like what I do for our heroes when I'm off-season, but right now, I'm kind of on and off with fires. Just got back from Northern California, so just for the time when I am here, I can put it on for anyone who wants to come and drive by and see it. Usually got it going around from about... Since it's getting dark, about 6:30 to about 9 o'clock.
That's fantastic. Thank you. Thanks for sharing that with the citizens. If you'd just leave your card here with this camera, I would appreciate it. Thank you very much. Next, we have Jerem Lewis.
My name's Jerem Lewis. My address is 141 North Paloma here in Cholo. Greatful for the opportunity, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members, and all you fine young men and young women from Cholo High School. Good to see you. Connor, especially good to see you. I was born and raised here in Cholo. Attended Cholo High School. Graduated in 1996. I currently am raising five children within the Cholo Unified School District. I have a daughter who's a junior in high school, and children all the way down, all the way down to a little kindergartner. Tonight, I am here to express my support for the bond vote that is upcoming. And in saying that, I am not only here to express my support for that bond issue, but also to take the opportunity that anybody that has the opportunity to hear my words tonight is to express defense of my children and every other child that attends the school within the Cholo Unified School District. Having looked at both sides of the issue with the cuts that the state has made to the school, to their capital budget for capital improvements, it is impossible for the school district to be able to make the necessary upgrades and repairs and everyday maintenance within the buildings of the Cholo Unified School District. I'm not one that's usually in support of higher taxes or additional taxes, but this particular vote, it would be irresponsible to not go out and be willing to give up a hamburger per month. Basically, that's what it works out to, to most individuals that live within the Cholo Unified School District. It really would be a super value meal to sacrifice that per month. Again, this is not a support. This is in defense of... There are safety issues within the buildings in the school district that need attention, and it is our responsibility as citizens to get out, to vote, and to support and defend our children, not just my five, but every child that walks the hollowed grounds of Cholo Unified School District. So I'm here with an exclamation point to vote yes on the bond issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person, Mr. Larson, John Larson.
Hello, my name is John Larson. I'm at 1081 Aspen Way in Linden, actually, but we say Cholo.
We even let outsiders come in.
Thank you. I want to express appreciation for the opportunity to stand before you this evening. I especially wanted to note that the council got extremely better-looking tonight. It is absolutely wonderful to see these, you say kids, but they're young men and young women. They're on their way. I'm extremely happy to see them here. Glad that I'm here in front of you tonight. First and foremost, I am a father of four. I have two children graduated from the Cholo school system. I have two children currently attending, one in high school, one in junior high. And second of all, I come before you as the president of the Cholo Unified School District governing board, and I would like to ask for support for the bond election that we have before the people. This is a mail-in-only election, so you will receive your ballots in the mail. We encourage you, in fact, we exhort you to open that up, vote yes, and get it sent in at the appropriate time. Some of the things that I wanted to visit with you about, I want to express to you that this is, in fact, a safety issue. Mr. Lewis touched on that a little bit. I want you to know that there are... We have issues with fire alarms, some that are so outdated that we can't get them to work all the time, some, in fact, are non-functional. We have decaying buildings and numerous buildings that have leaky roofs. And with the approximately 85% cut in funding to our school from the state, it has become impossible for us to be able to maintain our buildings. We have unreliable, outdated heating and cooling facilities. In fact, some of them are only cooled by evaporant coolers. And some of our trafficways, our walkways, our trafficways are so dilapidated and in such poor shape, it's actually... You're able to twist an ankle if you're not really careful walking on those things. And finally, we have a bus fleet that is in poor shape, numerous breakdowns within the first 10 days of school this year, and also our, what we refer to as our white fleet, our cars and trucks and those types of vehicles are also high mileage and in poor shape. And I just come to before you to express my appreciation and my desire that you vote yes on the bond. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anyone else on Call to the Public? Seeing no one else move, I'll close Call to the Public and come back to Special Events. This evening, we have a presentation by our youth delegations here, and we'll turn the time to them.
I'm McKenna.
Well, I'm Connor.
I'm Akira.
Just to introduce ourselves again.
Make sure you speak up.
Okay. Before we get started, we want to thank the council members for letting the Student Council participate in Student Government Day. We always look forward to it, and we always look forward to seeing how the city runs, so thank you for that. A few weeks ago, we got the opportunity to go to the League of Cities Conference, and there we got to learn how to be better leaders in our school and our community. So without further ado, I'm going to turn the time over to Akira.
Okay. So at the conference, we had speakers. Okay. All right, there we go. Okay. One of the speakers was Dustin Nunez. He's a motivational speaker. He talked about celebrating for no reason, so it's one of the things that I really loved about his talk, and that leaders, as leaders, we bring certainty to uncertain situations, energy to non-energetic situations, and positiveness to negative situations. So as leaders, we need to put that positive and negative... Like positive energy to other people around us, and maybe not like we have... Like we celebrate for our birthdays or for Halloween or different things, but maybe just to be alive, to celebrate, to be alive. He had two... There's two, number one decision and number two decisions that we can make in our life. And the number two reason is you can make is who you choose to hang out with. It's really important, the people you surround yourself with, whether it's leaders or maybe people who don't have a good influence on you. And then the number one decision you can make is to love yourself, because if you can't love yourself, then you can't love other people around you. And then the quality of your life depends on the quality of your relationships, like the relationships you have with your family or friends.
I'm so sorry.
Or the friends you have, and then the language you use. He said, "What if everything you said came true?" Or like, there's a camera following you around, would that change what you said? There's nine steps to go to the next level. One is ask harder and better questions. Two, take full responsibility. Three, up the ante and find a compelling target. Three, surround yourself with a peer group to support your new targets. And five, feed the mind. Four... Six is take persistent, consistent, and passionate action. Seven is to evaluate and track. Eight is celebrate your growth. And nine is contribute, always give back. So service. And then Connor.
I had Alberto Olivias, I think I'm saying that right. And so his five key engagement behaviors was connect and engage, serve others, lead by example, address conflict, and explain worldwide views. It's like he wants us to do things with a purpose, not just doing it because everyone else is, sort of thing. Okay.
My speaker was Baratha Tata, and he had a very short kind of speech. It was about 10 minutes long, and he talked about how he created SSS, which is Students for Sustainable Schools. Basically, they focused on recycling and making the school more efficient with what it has. So what they basically did was they put recycling bins in every room at Hamilton High School in Phoenix, and they also made an electronic waste program, which not very many schools have, or very many places anywhere have. So he really cut back on all of the waste that our schools have.
So I had networking, and this is a great part of the conference, is we get to go and we get to talk to other youth delegates and student councils and see what they do to better their communities. These are just a few examples of things that they did that I thought we can maybe incorporate in our community. The first one is Day of Shredding, which I know it sounds creepy and dark, but it's not, I promise. It's about how this one school, what they did was they advertised to local businesses that the student council would shred their old documents and their old papers that they didn't want anymore, and I thought this would be a great way to give back to the local businesses, because shredding can be time-consuming. I work in an office, and I absolutely hate it, so I thought that could be a great way. And also, local businesses, they donate a lot, and they sponsor the high school a lot, and they really help us out when they need it. And so I thought that could be a great way to give back. Movies by In the Moonlight, that's just something that we could do for kids. If parents just want to drop off their kids for night, we would watch them. We'd provide snacks for them. We would set up a screen and a projector, and we'd play movies for them for the night. I thought this would be a great way to show the younger kids what Student Council is about, how we give back, and hopefully, they would join it when they were older. Old-timey music is another thing that I really liked. I talked to a girl from another high school in Phoenix about this. What they did was they advertised to local community members to give us their old iPods and MP3 players, and what they did was they wiped all the other music off of it, and then they downloaded elderly, older music on it, and they gave it to retirement homes, and they let the people there listen to it. And she said that it was amazing to watch their faces light up whenever they heard songs that they knew, and to see them sing along with it, and she said it was a great experience. And I'd love to see Cholo High School take part in that, because I think it would be really cool. So this is just a video, and before they play it real fast, I want to thank council members for sending us on that amazing trip, because we loved meeting people there. We loved listening to the keynote speakers and learning about how we could better our school and our community, so thank you for that. Play it now.
Cholo, named by the turning card in the heart of Arizona's white mountains, where you can escape, elevate, unwind, have fun, and meet.
So that's all we have. Thank you, guys.
Great job.
Yes.
Thank you for that presentation.
So the next item we have is the presentation and discussing regarding city council priorities and goals by Justin Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor, council members, and Cholo High School student leadership. Tonight, we have a presentation, fourth in a series of four presentations, discussing the council priorities and goals, and these goals are what we use as a basis for setting our budget, how we're going to spend our money for the upcoming year, and the projects we want to tackle. For tonight, we're going to be talking about infrastructure, preserving our existing assets. Next slide? Oh, thanks, Bill. So as an overview, we have four major council-identified priorities. The one we're discussing tonight, infrastructure. Ones that we previously discussed, quality of life, economic and community development, And under each of the four main categories, we have four subcategories for quality of life. We have downtown development, public information efforts, community focus and safety, economic development. We have recreation as an economic development tool, community partnerships, focused future, and education, and retail and commercial expansion. And the fourth one is organization, strategic and master planning, focus on city employees, emergency preparedness, and regional partnerships. And again, the priority for tonight that we're going to discuss is infrastructure, preserving existing assets. So the purpose of our discussion tonight is to bring to the council and those who are participating in the meeting tonight the four topics, and also to encourage, I guess, thinking outside the box. Are we happy with the current goals and objectives that we have as a city, and do we need to add to or change any of the existing goals? So we have four topics we want to address tonight, and I'll cover a couple of these, and then our Public Works Director, Bill Cupp, will help me with the infrastructure portion of the presentation, and then I'll wrap it up with discussion on the financial reserves. So we have appearance and image, protecting our investments, maintaining standards, and financial reserves. So before we get started, just to be clear on what infrastructure is, it's defined as the basic physical and organizational structures, facilities, and systems that help the city of Cholo operate. Examples of infrastructure are streets, sewer system, water system, parks, and facilities. And a lot of the student government leaders here today were able to take tours of the city and hopefully get a better idea of what those are. We have city-owned streets, sewer system, which we... Sewer lines, lift stations, treatment facilities. We have our water system, which is currently water lines and wells. We have a lot of parks and ballfields throughout the city, BMX track, Festival Marketplace, cemetery, and the metal property. Facilities will include our new police headquarters, which you can see on the Deuce of Clubs, City Hall, library, the Aquatic Center, city campus, and the airport. Here's some pictures of what we feel as the city's staff and council is involved with to really beautify the Deuce of Clubs, our main street going through town, some before and after photos of the new public safety building. Other things with appearance and image, we want to create and maintain an attractive image. When we have visitors come to our town, we want them to have a good impression when they enter our city and when they visit our city facilities. Our city crews work hard to beautify and maintain all of our facilities, parks, sports fields, and cemetery. We also have public art, which is displayed in several places, but most notably, the statue in Festival Marketplace. And we also want to have landscapes and features that people like to come visit and feel comfortable, and we want to keep all of our facilities, vehicles, and equipment clean and well-maintained. We want to designate certain areas to keep open space. We don't want to become too congested. We do encourage growth, but we want to have some areas where we have greenery and open space, and we feel like the meadow is really helping us to accomplish that. And we also have other areas throughout the city. We also have the Cholo Bluff Trail, which has the story walk, and you can also do fishing down there now. We've recently entered into an agreement with the fishing game where they're going to be stocking fish in that creek, so it just encourages people to get outdoors and enjoy their time in Cholo. We also want to preserve and protect our history by supporting the local museum, and in this year's budget, we have budgeted funds to move the old Cholo jail, and it'll be moving over here to the City Hall area. And here are some photos of the Cholo metal property. As far as protecting investments, we want to keep in good repair and maintain the infrastructure we spent a lot of money on. We established a five-year capital improvements plan to ensure citizens have clean drinking water and efficient sewer system, safe roads and sidewalks. We also have job order contracts for specific projects like water wells and repairs for sewer manholes and sidewalks using the same contractor for a citywide project, which provides a consistent product and also saves the city money. And I'll turn some time over to Bill Cupp to talk about protecting our investments with the infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Thank you, Mayor, council, and guests. Okay, my first slide here is... I've been driving the slideshow, so Ann's going to help me out here on this part here. For new road constructions and major repairs, we have $3.7 million budgeted in fiscal year 2018, which is July 1st, 2017, to June 30th, 2018, and that amount includes a general fund subsidy of $1.2 million. Basically, what that means is that we receive funds from the state for gas tax, shared revenues for gas tax, and also for vehicle licensing that makes up the rest of that money. But the city feels that it's important to keep our roads in good shape, and so we actually subsidize $1.2 million a year, or this year, anyway, to take care of that. Of the $3.7 million, $450,000 will be spent, like we do every year, on the Slurry Seal Project. Basically, that project is every six-year, every road in the city gets patched, crack-filled, and a new slurry surface. Also, some major projects that are included this year are Cholo Lake Road and Park Valley Subdivision, Phase 2 Mill and Overlay, 10th Avenue Reconstruction, and also a new road that's going to connect Whipple to Wolford on 8th Street, which is just north of the Oaks Club. Also, of that $3.7 million, we should note that $1.2 million of that is budgeted for Scott Ranch Road Extension and Bridge. That is an effort between the city and the county to set aside funds to help leverage some grant funding in the future, and actually, there is a grant application on tonight's agenda for that purpose. Thank you, Ann. In 2008, staff implemented a pavement evaluation program, and we produced this map, and it's tough to read, but basically, the different colors are different years, and we established... Or I'm sorry, this is the condition map. Each different color represents a different pavement condition. We rate the streets from number one, which is basically a failed street, to number 10, which is a brand-new road, and then everything in the middle there. This is a tool that we use to help us program our capital projects and understand where we need to spend our money on road projects. This slide I included, this was actually part of a presentation that I did for council last year at the retreat, when we talked in-depth about the pavement management plan. And the thing that I wanted to point out on this slide is if you look at the bottom line and you see those numbers that are circled in red, you'll see that 2008, the first year that we had the program in place, 62% of our streets were a six or better, which we're calling above average. And now, the most recent assessment that we did, 91.6% of our roads are rated above average. Something that... I don't know if there's any number of people here in the group, but something that is interesting, in 2008, the roads that were ranked number 10 was 11.4%, and that puzzled me for a minute, and then I remembered 2008 was the year that was the very end of the big building boom here, so we had lots of new streets and lots of new subdivisions, and that's what's happening there on that slide. Thank you. The next thing I'm going to talk about is our water infrastructure. We have $2 million budgeted in fiscal year 2018 for major water projects, and those are new water lines and improvements to our wells. lines and improvements to our wells. Some of these project-specific items on water are we're replacing old water lines along 16th Avenue Alley, as well as on West McNeil. We also have capital budget for storage tank maintenance. You can see in this photo, there's a storage tank behind well number five, and there's actually two 1-million-gallon tanks back there. And those tanks, not necessarily these, they're in pretty good shape, but our tanks are ready to have some maintenance done, some painting and cleaning and things like that. So we do have some dollars in the budget for that this year as well. This is a photograph of the inside of well number five. Over the past year, Public Works Operations has completed a campaign to rehab all of our wellsite buildings and facilities. So this plays right into our maintaining existing infrastructure. And this slide is, I think, a really good example of what the inside of our well buildings look like. And I mean, this looks like a commercial kitchen, almost. It's very clean. Everything is painted. Everything is organized in there. A couple of months ago, we had a group from U.S. Geological Survey come and visit our well number seven, which is one of the oldest wells in town. And they commented that they had been traveling all over the southwest United States, looking at wells, taking water samples, and doing some other things. They looked at over 70 well sites, and they said that this was the cleanest and best-maintained one they had seen. So I think that speaks a lot for our operations people and the dedication that they showed to maintaining our infrastructure.
Where is well five?
Well five is the one on Whipple, at the top of the hill. Well seven is the one, actually, by where you live. The next item to speak about is our sewer and our project investments in sewer. 3.7 million invested in, or budgeted in fiscal year 2018 for major sewer wastewater project. Examples would be installing new service mains and upsizing sewer lines. Specifically, there are large construction, reconstruction projects that are already under design at Camp Town, and then at the Sierra Vista and Hillcrest subdivisions. Some of this 3.7 million also was a carryover from previous years. It was leftover money that we still had to spend on the wastewater treatment plant project. So the actual projects are a bit less than that. But it's still a very, I would say, I don't want to say aggressive, but it's pretty ambitious, capital improvements plan that we have for wastewater this year. And we're working really hard to get everything completed. Next slide. This is, two photos here. The photo on the left, the before, is our, was our wastewater treatment plant before the reconstruction project, and then the after is the, is the new construction. And you can see the two smaller lagoons, those circular items are clarifiers, and then we have a number of new buildings on the very top of the page there. When we first started looking at expanding or improving our wastewater treatment plant, our motivation was, was that the treatment standards were increasing. DEQ and EPA had some additional requirements for us. It was a very old plant, so we decided to go forward with the reconstruction. We'd actually been studying this for over 10 years. And when we first started looking at this project 10 years ago, the cost for treating wastewater was upwards of $20 per gallon, per gallon of daily capacity. Our plant's a two-and-a-half million-gallon plant. So at that time, we were looking at a $50 million project. We got together with a really good team, a great design team. We had some pretty innovative ideas about how to do this and how to cut costs, and we built this plant for under $11 million, which is about $4.40 per gallon. So staff is always looking at ways to bring value to the taxpayers here, and I think this is a good example of that. And then finally, we want to talk about maintaining standards. We are required by law and our own ethics to adhere to legal and industry standards. And there's a list here, the manual uniform traffic control devices, international building codes, plumbing codes, et cetera, federal standards for drinking water, Arizona revised statutes, Arizona DEQ, Maricopa Association of Governments, which is what our design standards and construction standards are based on, and then our city code. And there are others as well. That is an all-inclusive list. As you know, and I'm sure you've heard about this, regulatory environment is always changing, and it's never getting easier. Some of these changes have significant costs associated with them, like the wastewater treatment plant. Staff's goal is to be proactive, seek out cost-effective approaches to meet and exceed agency standards. And there's an upside for this as well, because meeting agency standards also helps the city assure that our contractors and our developers are building things to our standards so that they'll have a long service life. That's all I have. I think I'm going to turn it back over to Mr. Johnson to finish.
Thank you, Mr. Cupp. Last item we have to talk about is the financial reserves. The city staff and council has an objective to maintain financial reserves. We want to have a conservative approach to our city budget. We never want to spend everything that we have in the budget. We always want to save money in case there are events or unplanned activities that come up without us being prepared for them. So we always have a reserve available. Part of that requirement came when the permanent base passed in last year's election. That required us to keep a minimum of $1 million in reserves. And we also like to set aside annually to save for future projects. We have several completed projects. Mr. Cupp talked about the wastewater treatment plant. The city had saved for several years to try and raise some of our own money, so we didn't have to borrow all of the money to complete the project, which means we're going to have less debt to repay. And also, we're currently saving, we have $1.2 million money saved in reserves for a water treatment plant. Currently, the city gets all of its water from underground wells, but we're looking at the possibility of building a water treatment plant, which would treat water from Cholo Lake, so we could use that water for drinking water as well. This table has a breakdown of the operating reserve goals for general fund, water operations, and wastewater operations. The number you see on the left-hand side is enough operating reserves to operate the city for two months without any additional revenue coming in. And you'll see in our fiscal year 18 budget, which is the budget for the year that we're currently in, that started July 1st and goes till June 30th of 2018, we have $3 million set aside in the general fund, $675,000 set aside in water operations, and $425,000 set aside in wastewater operations. So this money has not been programmed for any type of capital or operations activity. It's just sitting there in the event that we need The city council and staff also wants to manage our debt responsibly. In the last couple of years, we've prepaid debt, which means we've paid off our debts early, ahead of schedule, which frees up money for capital and for saving for future projects. We also review and update our capital improvement plan. It's a five-year plan, and we meet with staff and council and residents every year to prioritize and program projects that are valued over $50,000. That concludes the presentation we have prepared for you tonight. Staff is available for any questions that you guys may have.
Thank you, Mr. Cupp and Mr. Johnson.
Thank you.
So the next item on the agenda is the consent calendar. Item A is the proclamation by the mayor proclaiming September 17th through the 23rd of 2017 as Constitution Week in the city of Cholo. Item B is consideration of resolution number R 2017-28, approving submitting application for funding under 2017 Tiger Nine Grant Program for Scott Ranch Road and Bridge Project. And then item C is consideration of minutes of Cholo City Council meetings, regular meetings of September 5th, 2017. Are there any questions on that consent? Is there a motion?
There's a motion right here.
Okay.
For Councilman Mike Alsop, I move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Is there a second motion?
I second for Councilman Gene Kelly.
Can I call for a vote?
Hey, council members need to vote for the, when we vote, okay? All those in favor? Any opposed? See that pass unanimously. Now read the proclamation.
Okay. Whereas we, the people, in order to form a more perfect union, did our dream and establish a constitution for the United States of America to secure the blessings of liberty for ourselves and our prosperity. And whereas it is important that all citizens fully understand the provisions, principles, and meaning of the Constitution so they can support, preserve, and defend it against encroachment. And whereas, we must always remember those who risked and sacrificed their lives to protect our freedoms and honor those who stand ready to take action every day to defend our nation, both here and abroad. And whereas, the 230th commemoration of the adoption of the U.S. Constitution on September 17th, 1787, provides a historic opportunity for all Americans to learn about and reflect upon the rights and privileges of citizens and its responsibilities. And whereas, public law, 915, guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week to commemorate the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas, the people of the city of Cholo, Navajo County, Arizona, do enjoy the blessings of liberty and guarantees the Bill of Rights, equal protection of the law under the Constitution, and the freedoms derived from it. Now, therefore, on behalf of Daryl Seymour, Mayor, on behalf of the Cholo, of Cholo City Council, do hereby join our state and nation and proclaim the week of September 17th through the 23rd, 2017, as Constitution Week in the city of Cholo, and invite every citizen and institution to join the national commemoration dated this day, 19th day of September, 2017.
Thank you, Kirsten. Tonight, we have some small pamphlets here of the Constitution, as well as some on the back. We just encourage our citizens and our youth to learn the Constitution, learn the things that are a part of it, the things that we defend and we protect each day. So we appreciate that and to be part of that.
That was pretty good with no, not one breath.
Practice. She's been training. She's been training there.
I would say to Daryl 10 minutes.
So the next item on the agenda is new business. Item B has been pulled from the agenda. So... Item A is consideration of the resolution number R 2017-26, reciting, rescinding resolution number R 20111-8, and adopting family use agreement for council chambers and meeting rooms in city facilities and approving use fees.
Thank you. Just to review, in April of 2011, the city council adopted resolution number R 201108 that outlined a use agreement, including policies and procedures and fees for entities wishing to lease the council chambers and city hall meeting rooms. With the addition of the community meeting at the public safety facility, the use agreement and policy should be amended to include the newest meeting space, and it's staff's recommendation that we renew, or we amend the agreement to include that community room. The original provisions of the use agreement and policies remain, including stipulations that, one, the use of the meeting space is limited to outside governmental agencies or local not-for-profit organizations, and, two, a payment of a refundable security deposit and hourly rental fee is required. Organizations sponsored by, partnered with, or financially supported by the city will be exempt from paying the rental fees. The fees originally outlined in resolution 201108 will not change, and the new resolution merely adds the police department's community room to the facility use agreement. Mayor, if there's any questions, we're happy to answer those.
Are there any questions?
Say, I have a motion.
I have a motion. This one. For Councilmember Ronnie Crittenden, I move to adopt resolution number 201726, rescinding resolution number R 201108, and adapting faculty use agreement for council chambers and meeting rooms in city faculties and approving use fees.
I am seconding the motion for Councilwoman Connie Kocavas.
Better call on you. Yeah, I have a motion.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
I am seconding the motion for Councilwoman Connie Kocavas.
Any other discussion? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? See that that passed seven to zero. Thank you. At this time, we have a summary of current events. We look to council members, and also we'll go through council members first, and then we'll turn the time to our guests for their information at the school. Councilmember? Councilmember Alsop?
Thank you, Mayor. I just went to a board meeting this week for Meals and Wheels, the senior center. I just want to update you, they're on October Fest Wednesday, October 11th, 2017, to celebrate a special lunch at the cafe at the senior center. And along with that, at the senior center, you're going to have, you can eat in, or you can get it picked up for $7, delivered to the business. Any business in the city of Cholo for $10. Lunch service is at 11:30. If you have any reservations, if you want to do that, please call 532-0656, and I'd be happy to bring that meal over for the Oktoberfest. Also, I want to remind everybody about the Spooktacklers coming up in the Cholo Main Street. That's October 28th here in downtown Cholo. There's going to be a lot of booths and a lot of trunks and a lot of candy. And they're still looking for some more trunks and booths, if you'd like to participate in that. And if you'd like to, please give a call to 532-2680, and Diane will set you up with that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Leach?
Just to add to the haunted, the trunk-or-treat thing, that Billby goes way out and does a haunted house for the city. So please promote that. He does it the Saturday, the same night as the trunk-or-tree. So he invests a lot of his own personal money in it, and then gives it back to the community, all the proceeds. So please go out and help support the haunted house that he sets up.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Yes, I'd just like to commend the student representatives here tonight, the decorum that you exhibited at the League of Cities was exemplary. We're really proud of you, and thank you, and keep up the good work.
Mayor, kind of seconds, please?
Seconds.
I want to thank the sponsors, Mrs. Adams, who was there. She had a great time with the kids. Couldn't tell which one was the kids or which one was Mrs. Adams running around, but had a good time. And Mr. Whipple, thank you again for all the stuff you do with the kids in school and participating in this project, and continue the blessings and fun to have on us. Thank you.
Thank you. It's great to have them with us tonight. You know, one of the things that's kind of interesting, you're going to start seeing some of these posters go up in the community, and it's about yes for the safety of our children. I have the privilege also, and I don't want to disclose too much, but I've had the privilege of being the representative of the insurance for the school for the past 20-some-odd years. And I have an opportunity of every year going through and inspecting the school and pointing out hazards and liabilities and things that are there. And it's really... And it's really sad, some of the things that we are exposed to, but yet, we hope that we don't have the liability happen. There are a lot of unknown situations to the public, but at the same time, there are things that we can do with this bond that will make a difference for the safety of our school. It's not that the school is being negligent with maintaining their facilities, it's just that they have put it all towards education and the bare necessities to continue to stay open, and one of the things that has suffered has been the maintenance and upkeep of the schools. And so, and that's part of our responsibility as citizens to give to our communities so that we can have a great school, our students can be safe, and our kids can learn in an environment. So, as your mayor only, and as myself, as Daryl Seymour, I encourage you to get out and to support this measure, and to vote yes for the safety of our schools and help us approve this, this bond that we have coming up. It's not our first bond that we've approved, and it won't be our last, so hopefully, we can do it for our citizens, and I'm thankful for, you know, the people who gave me a school that I could go through and have back in the early '70s, when we built our first high school in Sholo. So, it's been a long time, and then we approved a new bond for a new high school for a lot of people, so let's continue the tradition of great education in our community. Thank you. During the time, Councilmember Kelly?
Yes, I want to also recognize these young people and their leadership role, and compliment them on accepting that responsibility and encourage them to continue to do so, as well as others. Regarding Constitution Week, I'm amazed, when I visit with people, how many are surprised how little numbers of words there are in our Constitution. This pamphlet contains the whole thing. That's it. That's all we need to run this country, and if we really, really pay attention to it, maybe even use the words, get back to it, we would be way ahead. I would like to encourage each one of you to familiar yourself, familiarize yourself with it, and read it multiple times so you really know what is in it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kelly, appreciate it. Comments now from our youth.
So, at the high school, we have a lot of fun things coming up, and we're excited to announce. Football, soccer, volleyball, and cross-country are all going on right now. This Thursday is our parent-teacher conferences, and then homecoming week is next week. Our theme is Beauty and the Beast. Monday is our Powder Puff football game, it's our junior girls versing our senior girls, it's at 7, and it is open to the public. Tuesday is our movie night, we're playing a movie at the football field for all the students. Wednesday is our bonfire. Thursday is Mr. Cougar, and for those of you that don't know what it is, it's like a talent show for our senior boys. They go up there, they show their talent, and it's really fun to watch them embarrass themselves, I encourage everyone to go. It's at the auditorium, it's $3 to get in, it's also open to the public. And then Friday is our game against Payson, and then Saturday is the dance, so that's everything that's going on for us.
Any other comments? Anything to share? I'll turn the time now to our city manager for his report.
Thank you, Mayor. For those that don't have a library card, the Sholo Public Library is promoting National Library Card signup month. Until the end of September, everyone who signs up for new card will be entered into a drawing for movie ticket, movie theater tickets. For adults who like trivia, the library is also sponsoring a trivia night for ages 18 and older this week, Thursday, September 21st, from 6:15 to 8:00 p.m., with trivia games and activities. In the public works projects, the waterline along the Deuce of Clubs continues at night, and it's nearing completion. The contractor will be installing new sidewalks, the concrete sidewalks, over the next couple of weeks. And the crews are also working on road improvements on 10th Avenue, the road that's west of Safeway. Regarding the widening of US 60 administered by the Arizona Department of Transportation, they'll be paving over the next couple of weeks, and that project continues. And finally, we'd like to thank the Sholo School District for the great opportunity that our employees have had to showcase what, some of what we do and share with the students what we do in our everyday jobs, and thank you, Sholo High School students.
Thank you, city manager. As scheduling of meetings, we just want to remind council members that we do have our retreat on October the 5th at 9:00 a.m. until it's over, and then we will, that is open to the public. Those, right now, we're trying to secure the public safety building as the meeting place for that meeting. If not, it will be at the city hall, so those are the things that we have going. You know, this morning, these youths showed up early, they showed up early, and they showed up bright, and they showed up looking sharp, and tonight, they're still looking sharp, and they're still bright, and so, you know, it's kind of our future is right here, and we just really appreciate their service and their excitement and their energy of being part of our community, and we thank them very much. Thank each one of you, appreciate what you did, great job.
Seeing no other business, I will adjourn this meeting.